Your time for this special regular meeting. And we will call it to order at 5:30. And the discussions, we'll start out with strategic planning retreat 2025 and strategies and initiatives.
Andy?
Sure, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to have before us as we hear from the departments about their activities and their needs and their requests for 26, I wanted to have before us a fresh copy of the, um, the report from our strategic planning retreat. And it does have our priority initiatives by, by year, as you'll recall. Uh, that's on page five, I believe. So just for reference, um, and that's all I really wanted to say about it. We've already talked through it, uh, at the retreat and it's been adopted by council. But it is something that, uh, is a guiding document for the city as far as, if you want to work. And as we, uh, think about how we want to spend our funds, I just wanted that to be, uh, as part of a bunch of discussion, uh, for reference.
Well, it's a good review. I went through it again. I will say I just noted that we're well on our way with, uh, several, you know, that, that we had laid out. So, uh, that's what we've done in years past and it's, it's not just buying this guy drinks and he'll be actually get going on a lot of these things. And Andy, with that, uh, as a, a framework, uh, did you want to move on or?
Yes, I think we can go ahead and move on with, but we take Sadie first.
Sure.
Um, with the business and community promotion board, and then we can do the other departments as, as you choose.
All right, uh, Sadie, I didn't hear any oohling and aahing of new chairs.
Very nice. They were really nice in my meeting the other week too.
Yeah.
They're, uh, very comfortable.
Uh, good, good. Anyway, so.
Thanks for letting me come tonight instead of last week.
Well, we all, we all understand. That was quite, uh, traumatic, but really glad, you know, there's nothing life threatening there.
No, everything is recoverable. Luckily, Will's young there, but still it will heal faster than if that happened to you or me. So, awesome. Well, Mayor and Council, thank you guys for having me in your packet. You got an executive summary from me. You got a community promotion budget, uh, proposed increases, what has been allocated in, uh, my budget this year. Obviously everyone on council knows that this is the first year that we've had the community promotions board, um, allocated a significant budget and being directed by a team with a strategy and a vision and a plan. Most of this year has been spent building foundation. Um, obviously we came with nothing really when it came to a plan and a strategy around marketing and community development from a sense of how we handle that from a promotions standpoint, both how we communicate to our residents and how we communicate to our visitors as well. So this year has been about building foundation, re-establishing partnerships with the business community, um, re-engaging the business community as well as re-engaging the community members here, straightforward, factual answers on their questions and making sure that they have a place where they feel like they can engage, where we've had the community conversation meetings. So this year has been all about development of a foundation and kind of learning a lot as we go. What are needs of something like this from the strategy perspective? Um, and a lot of what we realized is we still have some significant gaps in areas of being able to have the right amount of support so that my. being able to have the right amount of support so that myself and public works are not significantly overloaded by running professional events in a way that is supported from away from a marketing standpoint, all the way to an event execution standpoint. There's definitely a lot of heavy reliance on volunteers. Idaho Springs is experiencing volunteer burnout right now since there are a very small portion of people in our community that volunteer. And they tend to always be the ones volunteering. And it's hard to rely on that without burning them out. So there's some kind of in my budget, some increases around that kind of thing. While I don't have a ton of great ROI from this year's budget, because this year has been spent mainly on building the website, the brand, the foundation, the strategy. Now we're at the point finally in fourth quarter where we can start launching and executing and marketing off of that brand. We're ready to do the brand launch. We have a new brand video that was presented to the board yesterday. That's going to be going on with the campaign for a shop local campaign. What we're noticing in the data is that while our resident or while our restaurants in the county and based off of spending data, the restaurants are up ten point four percent as of right now. When it comes to credit card spending data, retail is down thirteen point seven percent based off of spending data. So we really feel it's important that we focus on supporting our retailers and helping uplift them in the fourth quarter through kind of a shop local campaign in combo with our new brand launch. So while I don't have a ton of ROI yet, what I can show you is we did a placer summary data for May first through September second of this year, which means we counted how many people. There's a difference between visits and visitors. Do you guys remember the difference between those? So visits is anyone who does not live or work in Idaho Springs, and it counts however many times they come. So if they come ten times, they're ten visits. And then visitors is a unique person. So the first time they come, they're counted once. If they come again, they're not counted again. Does that make sense? So May first through September second, downtown experienced a little over seven hundred thousand visitors. Now we're down two point eight percent for the same time period last year. East End, six hundred, a little over six hundred thousand visitors, down only one point eight percent. And those are visits. Visitors are obviously a little bit lower than that. But again, we're seeing what you can really see is when we look at East End visitors versus visits. East End visitors is three hundred and nine thousand versus six hundred thousand visits on East End, which tells us people are coming back. The reason I shared those numbers, those down numbers, is because they were in the same time period for Manitou Springs and the same time period for Breckenridge. They are down ten point, ten percent and seven point four percent. So really to say when our neighbors are experiencing that amount of downturn in our visits, we're only seeing a short amount of downturn. It shows me that what we're doing is working. We are what the consumer is looking for. We are approachable, we're accessible, we're close to Denver, we're not expensive. And we are a really friendly place to engage that's still not economically challenging. And so what's important right now is keep telling that story in the right way and spending that the right way. Just some reference points for you guys. These are areas of opportunity that with the right strategy next year, we could really target. To understand visitor behavior, thirty four to forty percent of our visitors in twenty twenty four either came to us from a gas station or were in a gas station and left us immediately. So forty percent of our visitors, their first engagement with us or their only engagement with us is a gas station, fast food, or Starbucks. So for every ten people who visited a gas station in Idaho Springs, only one of those people continued downtown. Another huge area of opportunity is right now forty one percent of our visitors are coming from unincorporated Clear Creek County. Meaning they were in trails, open space, or the woods before they came to us or after they visited us, mostly before they came to us. So that's another huge area. We have a large, what they call leakage category, meaning the percent of people that go to unincorporated, we only captured forty one percent of that market. Where we have a lot more opportunity, we continue to capture more of that market. We are, just to be clear, continuing to see when we look at Idaho Springs overall of twenty twenty four visits, one point six million visitors is how many visits, sorry, is how many visits we have in twenty twenty four. That's down one point seven percent from twenty twenty three. And then the average time they spend in the market is seventy one minutes. So those are all metrics that I can then start to measure against as we start to have full picture data for the rest of this year. With a focus on fourth quarter, which we know traditionally starts to slow down, especially October, November tend to be pretty slow for us. We'd get a little slight peak up in December and then first quarter next year is when we also see traditional slowdowns. So January, February, March are are huge target areas to really put the brand that you guys invested money in to work in targeted and direct ways that we can spend those spend those dollars. So when it comes down to the budget itself, a couple of areas that I'm asking for increase and a couple of areas I'm asking just leave the same. To note, there is sixty grand within this budget, proposed budget, that's all grant money. Both match grant money and money that would be funded to us from grants. Currently am proceeding with two grants with four more on the budget for next year that aren't or not on the budget for next year because their money, fiscal money has not been released yet. So we know there's four more that we can apply for that we'll qualify for. I just don't know how much the CTO is going to be funding those four yet, besides the one on here for the fifty thousand. That's essentially the grant that's part B to the wayfinding grant we were already awarded. That would be an implementation grant to implement the wayfinding strategy that we're currently working on.
Sadie, that's on top of the twenty thousand that we already received, is that correct?
Correct. Yes, that's on top of the twenty thousand we've already, twenty thousand we received this year. This would be received, applied and received next year. And the ten thousand is match funding that we've committed to for a marketing grant applied for in combination with the Colorado State Tourism or the Clark County State Tourism Board. We haven't, we don't know if we've been awarded that grant yet. And that's for a trail heritage to, or trails heritage marketing campaign as well as a map that takes you from heritage recreation into businesses essentially. So those are grant funding opportunities. So those are kind of like just on there per request, but nothing is set in stone for those yet at this current moment. First line item on there to address is the increase in my director pay. Looking at, I did, you know, since it's the first time anybody's been in this role, this has been the first time I kind of understand the scope of the duties and the work being encompassed in this role. And I did a comparison through an HR company to kind of take my job descriptions and what I'm doing and what the average rate of pay is for that. We have a pretty decent discrepancy. So to get us back onto the low end of that kind of match of that funding, it would be just an additional fourteen thousand to align with that. City staff and I have spoke significantly about whether or not this year would be wise for me to come on as a city employee versus continue in a contractor role position. And to move me into a city employee would also accrue additional costs, meaning salary benefits, all the extra added cost. For this next year, I think, as we continue to understand sustainability, looking at making sure that this role is aderratizable, meaning that if you were to go and post this role up, you would get the quality candidates that you would want to fill this role in an active manner. Having that base salary range would give you a much better pool of applicants. And then I would be willing to go on for another year as contract and then approaching employment later next year or following year if we want to continue down that route. I am suggesting we leave the website and marketing category untouched and leaving it the same. Obviously, last, this year's budget included the website build out and the brand build. I am suggesting we take that budget and we apply it fully in paid marketing and advertising opportunities and targeted seasonal matches with the CTO. So the CTO can use that, we can match that and almost double that budget through Colorado State Marketing Co-ops as well as using it with, aligned with Argos grand opening. Other targeted advertising at the same time will draw that reach even farther, extending that money pretty significantly. When we're looking at marketing budgets for, say, other communities that are doing similar things to us, their operating budget just for paid advertising and marketing is in a hundred thousand dollar to hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. So keeping us on a little bit of the lower end while leveraging CTO grant funding and co-ops will help stretch that farther. I am suggesting that we add a social media management contractor to the budget. This is fifteen thousand. This is from a local contractor, not a digital ad agency. This is someone who lives here locally, who is a small business, who could come on from a contract standpoint and help manage social media. I think it's important to realize I am not a social media content designer or graphic designer or content manager. And it would be helpful to have a full person that can manage and implement the brand from a digital storytelling standpoint. Plus, when you look at how to track ROI from that standpoint, it is really important to look at social media and its importance in how people are getting and gathering their information. Without a strong person in that role, there's a big gap there. Local events and programming, we are asking for an increase. There's actually not as much of an increase to fireworks as we thought. So that's actually a slight increase. I put two categories of events for consideration. Our core events, which are the events that we have become known for with a few additional ads. One specifically is the CRC Park Concert Series. This would be designed for our locals. This would be a midweek concert in CRC Park, which has historically not been activated, giving us a time to kind of attract, say, the opening bands that are going to Red Rocks for the weekend, attract them to come to Idaho Springs to put on a concert, encourage people to bring to-go food down to the park, have a really nice gathering community centric. I would like to propose that event be kind of Idaho Springs Through the Ages themed and have music based off of a lot of our heritage to loop it in with the Colorado one fifty, two fifty next year, which is a huge celebration happening through the CTO based off of Colorado's heritage with one hundred and fifty next year. So there's, you'll see in there a thirty one thousand dollar increase. That's mainly for the CRC Park Concert Series. And then these additional suggested phase in events that are all pretty simple, not expensive events to run, but would add a more robust content calendar, which was something we got a lot of feedback from this year. Every event we had, everybody was like, we should do more of these. We could do that every weekend. Can we have more things to do? And I'm like, yeah, love that. And to do that, that brings me to bringing in a part-time events contractor. This would be a part-time allocated position contracted under me who would pretty much only be working full-time hours, I would imagine, in the summer. The rest of the time, it would be pretty low hours. So it would be an hourly contract. I allocated twenty two thousand for that. Again, super part-time. This is someone to help manage all the running of the events, help have a little bit of a budget to also get event staff. So say on Fourth of July, we can have paid people helping with trash pickup and maintaining the event area so that it's less of a burden on public works. So that would give that person a little bit of a budget to work with for certain events. There is an increase to the holiday decorating budget similar to, I think, Andy, you guys talked to council about the permanent lights that are going on all of our city buildings, right? Yeah. So this is a, the same contractor who has proposed a, the same solution, the permanent light solution for Minor Street. These would be a lease to own opportunity. So after five years, the lights would be owned by the city of Idaho Springs. He feels very confident in being able to install them along the roof lines. And then we work with the businesses whose electricity we're using to maybe offset their business license fee. Well, when we ran the numbers, it's a pretty non to be running these lights for the time that we would be running these lights for. And it's not a significant cost. And there are several businesses that said that they wouldn't even care about needing a decrease to their business license. Although I haven't approached every single roof line that would need electricity to know the exact answer to that. But it would be a way for us to light Minor Street, which has been something that's been talked about. It's in the downtown master plan. It would be something to go towards improvement. The mayor also mentioned that potentially the lights could also potentially come out of the downtown parking enterprise fund. Because that fund is direct towards downtown improvements. So potentially could use that fund for that money. So those are the areas of increase. Any questions?
Questions for Sadie, anybody?
On the holiday decorating, I mean, some of these old buildings, the electricity availability is not always there either.
So he's saying that he should be able to put them in sequence so that they're drawing, like, say, it would be like three buildings would be drawing on one point of electricity versus all the buildings drawing into their own points of electricity. The way that they sequence together, he feels pretty confident that within each block, he would maybe only need one or two points of electrical access on the roof lines to run the lights in sequence.
So I know that past council, I don't know if Kate was around, but we did try to do this once before and there was some issues.
And we're structurally looking at tiddly lighting though.
It was different lighting.
Yeah, like.
But it was more of a fire hazard type of thing. And now that these are LED, that might, maybe some of the liabilities are going away. But you also have to be careful how you attach to everybody's building.
Yeah, the tiddly lighting was more.
And it was going to cross the street.
Yeah, right, right. Because we were thinking like Laramore Square kind of lights. But these are not dangling between the buildings and I don't think they're drawing twenty percent of the power.
Then we got a fire marshal that would probably be making sure everything's good.
One, the, they are, Somerset, who's been working in this community for many years now, is the light contractor. And he's looking for a solution pretty much specifically for us. And the way that they attach to the buildings is very low impact. It's not screwed into the buildings. It's like this adhesive situation so that they're less likely to damage any historic facade. They don't have to be mounted or drilled into buildings. They're not hanging, they're mounted on them.
And they stay up and don't start dangling a year later.
Yeah, this is a new product for him. This is his second season. He has one full season of them in a lot of locations and he says he's not experiencing any concerns.
Because if we're buying them leased to own or whatever, you've mentioned that we're going to be picking up the maintenance and then we're still going to be hiring him. I don't think our public works is going to want to get on top of buildings and maintain lighting if they come loose or something like that.
I would imagine that they're in the proposal, if I remember it correctly, there is a service contract aspect of the lights during the lease period. Meaning that during the period.
After that, maybe we have to take something else with him. I'm sure it would be earthbound works.
No, no, no. And again, council, those are the ones that we already chose to install. I mean, they're going to be installed this year on city hall as well. And, you know, this also could be a decision that doesn't necessarily happen.
This is a year-round lighting. It's year-round because I think lighting up pounds, nice thing, you know?
Yeah, it's year-round and it's a soft white light, year-round. And you can choose to program it, to turn on it a specific time and turn off at a specific time. It changes with seasons.
So Sadie, it sounds like we want to beef up our events while also up against the wall with bodies to man events. So that, that's a big concern for me because I do agree that there is definitely volunteer fatigue in our towns. So have you worked out how many? So have you worked out how many hours you're thinking in of, of person, you know, how many hours that you're gonna need of people? How many people? Have you thought about a rate of pay? Um, have you thought about like, I mean, it sounds like summertime is gonna be the time that you're gonna be mostly meeting the employee of these guys. Um, and then what, you know, how do we guarantee that we have people coming back each year? So I mean, to, for me, it's like I did do events for nine years. I was a event manager. Um, not having, how do I say this? Having too many events and not enough bodies to man them is a huge issue. So it's like over promise, under deliver. I don't really care for that.
Nor do I.
And I think it's bad for the city as well. So I mean, I would think that maybe starting slower on some of these things and just seeing how the next year goes with the rollout of the Argo and things like that. And then maybe start to implement more. Um, you know, this is just my thought, like, uh, we just don't have that many employees in town. And if you're paying better for a seasonal job than a restaurant is, we're directly competing with our. Our employees, like our employees, so here in town. So that's just something I was thinking about.
Yeah, so to answer your question, yes, I have thought about a rate of pay. I've also thought about a person already. So there is a person within our community who runs an events contracting company. So she already has a job and has other clients who's, she's running events for. So it wouldn't be taking an employee from anywhere else. She also already has a team of people that she works with on an hourly rate that come in and do specific events with her. Um, so she knows it's kind of nice because she has a built-in package around her and she feels comfortable within the budget. She and I sat and reviewed kind of potential potentials of like what it would look like. She's worked very closely with me this year as a volunteer. Um, and has done several of the events. And honestly, most of those events would not have gone off as smoothly without her assistance. Um, again, we have a good amount of people in the community that are starting to really partner well. Another part of these events is most of these events have a partner agency along with them. So it's not the city doing the event all by itself. This is partnering with the rec. This is partnering with Clear Creek Arts and Education. This is partnering with other nonprofits such as the Advocates and Not Youth Network. And um those networks to bring more interconnected events versus these pop-up solo events. More working together um versus not. Also having the community events calendar done by this time this year versus, you know. May of next year helps a lot because then I can go to Scraps the Soils, the Elks, the Rec Center. Everybody and I can say, hey, here's the city's event calendar. What else do you see any opportunities in which you would like to partner? Do you see any opportunities where we might have conflict, where we have similar events that we might be able to band together? Um, so that's another huge part of why I feel like. And, and I did have some misgivings on adding more. Hence why I split them into two categories of like what I do think is really important for next year. And then potential phase-in events that we could add in um this year. Or just start kind of in our brains planning for twenty-seven. Um, as again, you mentioned, we see how Argo.
So when you say partner, is there the possibility of some of these businesses um financially helping some of these events, right?
Yeah, usually, for example, Furling's Fest, like this year I dropped the amount of money for twenty twenty-five. There was more money budgeted for Furling's Fest, but the amount of money that Tommyknockers gave offset that. So we came in significantly under budget. I also feel like events like Fourth of July can go, we can go up. We got two sponsors this year for Fourth of July. We've never gone out and asked for partner sponsorships and events before from a city's perspective. I think we're there. I think we have every reason and right to do so. Um, so there is also a way to make these events more robust and coming in under budget when we go across having partners.
I mean, my thoughts are too, I, I love the idea that we have more events possibility and doing things like this. But honestly, we have a parking problem too. And if we, we have these events and we have less parking than what we need, we can't sustain. I mean, we gotta think about how do we have these events and people flocking to the city? What do we do with all the vehicles?
Well, Sadie, you're uh looking at events and additional events during a time when we don't have parking problems.
Correct. All events that would be added onto the calendar would be during periods of time that are not peak periods. Again, the only event that happens in the summer season is Fourth of July. Outside of that, every other event that's happened is either starting after five, four PM or five PM. Such as the block parties targeted at locals who, again, were not experiencing parking problems during those events. Um, the CRC Park Series, that would be dedicated to, hey, walk to the park, you know? I mean, not necessarily meant to attract visitors. Sure, we'll visit.
What nights were the CRC Park?
Well, we're, those, that would be a new event for next year.
Are, are those weeknights or weekends?
Weeknights, yeah, weeknights. And again, the added events, if we were to look at the phase-in events, every single one of these phase-in events would be an on like calendar. Um, that was also attached packet. I don't know if you, I've got this one too. Um, all of the dates are outside of our, when we are classified at capacity. So it's a very targeted approach to, a lot of the businesses are like, hey, we need help in the spring. Hey, we need help in not necessarily the fall. We canceled the Fall Festival this year because everybody was like. Please, we have enough people here. We don't, please don't put on an event. You know, put it on in October. Sure, put it on in end of November, have a huge. There's been a lot of momentum around the big table down Minor and let's all have a big Fall Festival Community Dinner. Like, there's lots of momentum in the shoulders, not adding anything to the peak period. We definitely know what our cap is now after this Fourth of July. I can tell you exactly how many bodies we can pack in this town. And none of these events are designed to do that. Um, these are mainly designed to bring in specific types of people that we know we wanna be talking to. Um, and or uh meeting a need that we know is not being currently met. That is something that will attract people to us again to meet that overhead.
Well, um, I think the program's been a pretty good success. It's kind of hard to track things. And I don't know if we had an accurate way of tracking, but our sales revenue compared to other towns have been good. That's one indicator, I think. This is a pretty substantial increase in budget, you know? But I think other than tracking locals, I think it's important that we track or we try to attract outside. Because if you wanna get a substantial sales tax revenue from this, if you wanna track local and outside people.
Yeah, and we're definitely doing that.
If you um have the marketing to be able to market it to the outside residents too.
Yeah, and the nice part is that with laser and, and nice thing is we're partnering with Clear Creek County right now really well. On drilling down into the laser data, we can get really granular. I can tell you how many worker, how many workers we have in Idaho Springs on any given set period of time. How many people, and we can also start now with our new parking portal. We can start looking at how many, how many permits we have in the parking lot at any given time. How many of the parking spaces are taken up by an employee permit or a resident permit? So there's a lot of ways we can start really compiling this data, getting really creepy. If you wanna be honest about where these people are coming from and how to talk to them, you know? I can look at a category of people and I can tell you their preferences, whether I should be emailing marketing them. Whether I should be doing what TV station I should be talking to them on, what radio program I should be talking to them on. And get really granular on how we wanna target the right people, both residents and outside visitors to us. Also with Argo opening, I think it's a really important time for us to be really strategic on how we execute this brand. And because a lot of the people that are gonna be coming next year, this is gonna be their first time coming to Idaho Springs. And we wanna give them the impression, we want them to turn into visits, not one visitor. We want them to come back again and again and again and explore, oh, there's way more to see here. I also feel very confident that the new tourism director from the county is in a much more key place. Help us versus not be very supportive. Um, that partnership is already really developing in a stronger fashion. And there's gonna be a lot of opportunity for us to like, again, rise together by helping uplift the county. Get people to stay in Idaho Springs slash the county longer, um experience more of our businesses. We don't have a lot of people staying more than just for the day.
You know, and you can call it creepy and I know that it seems a lot of us built invasive in a lot of ways. But that's how you gain the marketing analysis that you need. And that's what everybody's doing to succeed in marketing.
I would also say we're very.
With AI and, and everything.
We also, because of the established relationship with PR company that we currently have, we're able to leverage a lot as a municipality. That we would never be able to leverage otherwise. We have news media basically vying for our attention. As well as our money. They want our advertising money. They're like, oh, we'll give you an even better deal. Oh, that's what they're giving you? Well, we'll give you an even better deal. Oh, we'll do this for you for free. And we have a pretty awesome opportunity with Fox thirty-one through the shop local campaign where they're essentially gonna be matching people's dollars for us. And we're not spending it that. And that's all because of these established relationships that we've been able to build in through our business partnerships. And again, that makes that budget be spent very wisely. You know, this is not frivolous spending for frivolous sake. This is very targeted spending. To again, get the results that we're looking for, which is an increase in our sales tax. To continue to see our sales tax dollars increase where other municipalities are already seeing decreases in their sales tax. We haven't seen a decrease yet this year.
Well, Y seventy has not been that slow in, in ten years. It's down nine and a half percent. All things being even, we ought to be down nine and a half percent. Right? I mean, there, there, there wouldn't be any other reason. Um, so the fact that we're still up uh almost three percent is uh, is, I feel very fortunate. I know Georgetown said they had an abysmal, just abysmal June-July uh timeframe. Uh, I think that we're talking being down double digit.
And we were still steady, kind of.
Yeah.
Even to, if not growth, depend, depend on if you're looking at it from the sense of we did a sales tax increase. So, and inflation.
I'm gonna be in Breckenridge tomorrow. I'm gonna have an opportunity to talk to some other Mountain Corridor mayors, and I will. And all we're talking about is economics.
Yeah.
Have you thought about with like the business sponsorships, like formalizing that process, like having different like event sponsorship, like. Levels and amounts of money to give that makes it a different kind of?
Yes, that's something that, looking at the strategic plan, you know, for twenty-six is, is probably one of my top goals. Is making it easy for the businesses to engage and figure out what that means. With the website being about ready to be up and fully launched, which means we can start looking at ways. Hey, if you want your business up on the featured section, that would be included in this tier of giving. Um, so that is definitely something, as well as being, you know, co, uh. Co-tagged, and I lost my social media term, and this is why. When you make a post, post with someone, you post them together. Um, again, it doubles your reach. And so we would be those co-sponsored posts where we would be posting together with businesses. They would get this money of those per month, all those kind of things. In all honesty, like we should be for that right now because most of our businesses have way more followers than we currently do as Visit Idaho Springs. However, I think part of it is again, the look of it, of that bringing their name to a front from a more official standpoint. Plus, from the CTO standpoint, it puts them on the Colorado State Tourism Radar in a lot of ways. And a lot of them are very grateful for that opportunity.
What is that behind you?
Yes, this is some of the assets that we've been able, there's another one over there, so there's two of them. Council-approved bike racks um to be built, that are city-owned bike racks. These are the marketing materials that will belong on the bike racks. There's two sides, that side with the mountain and this side with the water wheel. The nice thing about the material for these, and this is what we're trying to do on all of our stuff, is to make them evergreen and reusable. So this is the plastic, there's a vinyl mount, uh a vinyl sticker that goes.
QR code.
It has a QR code to get us to the website. Um, there's this, there's a sticker that's a really low-cost vinyl sticker that goes on these, that sticks really well. That we can use to put on like an events calendar or say we're doing a certain sponsorship or a certain event or a certain fundraiser. We can uh sticker these easily and replace that center panel. Um, or even just portions of the center panel at any point in time. Um, and this is like a heavy-duty stuck stuff. So we have three of these to be installed next week on Monday. And I were emailing about it. Um, so these are some of the things that we're, that are out of the marketing budget. As well as, you know, getting the trash cans racked and putting event calendars on trash cans with QR codes. Making sure that we're having communication in all the different mediums and platforms, not just on the internet. Real stuff too, as much as us.
All right. Anything uh further for Sadie? More questions? Sadie, thank you very much. Appreciate that. And uh, we will move to the uh work session memo. Uh, Guy, is that you?
I believe so.
All right.
This is memo, just have a look back.
Um.
Yeah, thank you. At the year that has gone by and uh touch base on some possible funding. Um, or projects or programs that this council may consider. Um, I don't know how much you want me to go through this, if you want a chance to reach, to read it. I think I can touch uh on a few things. On page one, the Historic Sites and Facilities Board. Um, they have identified a, a couple items, um, if you want to consider for budgeting. Um. The, the train library, uh, we're doing City Hall and so on and so forth. Um, those can be uh drilled down to a little farther if we wanna get um some estimated costs. But those are some of the projects that they've identified. Um, going a little further, bottom of page two, hall water station improvements. The water station's fairly old. Um, we recommend about seventy thousand dollars in upgrades. Um. That includes a new concrete pad, uh some security out there, uh different forms, different ways for them to load water. Uh, point of sales upgrades, internal upgrades into uh the system, backflow preventions, meters, stuff like that. Um, what I did notice though is this year for bulk water. You projected sixty-five thousand dollars in sales and so far as of end of August, you produced about a hundred fifty thousand dollars in sales. Now, that's not just the bulk water facility, that is also a selling out of meters. There is a big demand for accessible potable water in the Two County area. Um, all of these facilities have gone away in Gilpin County and we're kind of the only game in town. Um.
For the Argo, I could like their tour, they're, they have those like water tanks up there and they said they were like hauling water and stuff there.
Uh, not anymore, but they're gonna be hauling the most. My understanding. I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's just what was mentioned that they were getting.
Yeah, there's two stations.
Yeah, it shut down?
Yeah, one up by the KOA and one that was kind of the back road going to Netherlands. Uh, when they came out of the water. Yeah, and I think both those have shut down in the last two years recently. And so, you know, users are fairly habitual, a lot of them are. Um, whether they're doing dirt mitigation, dust mitigation, whether they're filling up a residence, a business. Uh, and a company that does um, uh, land, um, like uh yard maintenance and stuff like that. They need water, so um, they're gonna pretty quickly learn where we are, how much we cost and where we're gonna. I think you're gonna have a built-in plan. Um. I touched on, on page three, interstate parking. Um, you are gonna see an increase in net revenue. Um, just because of the way the market share now works in that contract. Um. So those are a lot of the, the hiring things, not a lot of expenses and new expenses come out of kind of my end of stuff. Um, Guy, a really good catch on your part.
The Parking Enterprise Fund. We did not designate any east-west because when we came up with the Parking Enterprise. There was only one. That is that downtown needed to raise money for a parking structure. So Guy recently looked it up and it's like, you know, you're gonna wanna have some kind of a geographic. Uh, cutoff point, right? I mean, uh, City Hall makes sense. I mean, uh, City Hall makes sense, but uh, look, I mean, I'm just making it up. But you know, we could say City Hall and Points West, that is the Parking Enterprise Fund for downtown. All things remain the same. And then from City Hall East, that is a separate, that's an East End Fund. That uh, we could use for what what council agrees on now such things as maintaining uh, the bike park, uh, EMS responsibilities.
Why don't you just divide it into the wards? At that point in time, you've already had that outline, right? Is that where you're talking about two different segments of the, of the parking authority?
Yeah, why doesn't it use it?
Yeah, why? And I don't understand why it does either.
Uh, because we are painted into a corner with downtown. It can only be used Exactly.
Well, let's just say hypothetically, that parking garage is done. Is it for upkeep of that parking garage? If we get excess amount of money over the course of years, where does that money get to go?
You you know, uh, we, once the structure was paid off, future councils would decide. When, you know, what's what's the same running us to maintain? And then what do we want to do with the rest of the money?
So that's not in this resolution, so is that somewhere else?
Is that only for the parking garage or is it for parking downtown?
Well, if you look, the the verbiage, uh, Guy printed for us at the bottom of paint, uh, page three.
Okay, so this is in here, but this isn't tying it to just downtown, is that?
That that is just downtown. And that's back when we voted in paid parking about five and a half years ago. That was all the fault we put into it. We weren't even pondering uh, you know, East End or anywhere else.
I I don't actually see where it specifically says only downtown and only downtown parking. It doesn't?
It doesn't.
So, so what's the problem?
I, well. Well, for example, if we wanted to take a portion of the funds to maintain the bike park or to reimburse EMS for additional expenses, that's not a lot.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I think regarding, I don't know how I feel that the bike park being funded by parking. I mean, but I would have no problem with all the funds, both east and west and downtown going towards the parking parking garage and updating our EMS, up upgrading our EMS. As far as like working on the trails right now, they're very low in my, on my, my to-do list as far as where that money goes. But I mean, it the way it sounds to me here, sure, we could add in the other entities, the other enterprises that we want this money to benefit. Is that what you're saying that we need to do?
Or keep it separate.
Or just start a separate one that talks about something different.
The divided one. Keep this.
I mean, wouldn't we want to pay off the parking garage first? Wouldn't that be the highest priority? And then I I think EMS would be the second highest priority and then anything after that.
You'd have parking from an East End that should be directed towards the East End, I think is what Chuck is saying.
I know, but we already, we already paid and I, but but we're going to have parking on the East End that is going to be uh, for profit, right? Essentially for profit.
But do we have enough?
Well, but can we actually really afford to even think about building another parking structure when we already have that one then?
Structure, but maybe there's other surface lots.
I know, but if we leave it open, we can do whatever we want with the money. We're not, I I I'm just saying, why are we nailing ourselves into these different enterprises?
Well, we'd have to add verbiage to this and make it the whole citywide or keep two separate.
And we would have to make it loose looser with what we can spend the money on, because right now it's it's very clear.
Uh, and I and I get that. That's what I was just saying. It doesn't say EMS and there are any of, you know, other people's wants. So why is the, what's the big deal about making it looser?
Well, I guess if council wanted to make it looser.
I mean, is there, I I I just can't see the downsides. You're gonna.
I'm the two instead of making.
I I'm just telling you, be prepared for the criticism. There's gonna be a bunch.
Oh, isn't there every day? I mean, I'm the probably only one that really reads the criticism every day. Which one are we talking about?
Let let me tell you, uh, two weeks ago, a like forty-year member of our community was going off about the paid parking and about, basically he was under the the impression it was like a slush fund. That we just spend on whatever. And I said, no. We have the paid parking because the downtown businesses did not want assessments against their building. So we said, okay, well then the people that need the parking will pay to bring in the parking. And that's why we initiated it. So I said, we're not spending that to paint curbs or uh, uh, do lighting down there at the ball field. We are only spending that to fix parking problem. So, he was stunned, forty-some years in the community.
Well, I think what Chuck's saying too is you're opening yourself up for a great amount of debate on why are you doing it that way.
Yeah.
Again, you can be specific within this wording to what it's for. I just don't understand why we have to have different sections for di- different rules for different sections of town.
Well, just.
Especially since that part of town is gonna raise money, right? That could be used to pay this off, which is gonna cost us a fortune.
Use it for that.
Well.
But don't we want to open it up to, like my suggestion would be street maintenance, because this is creating a lot of additional traffic.
Uh, it's a, it's a very good point.
Painting of curbs and everything and.
Again, I I I'm, I think that the however long it's gonna take the parking garage to get built and get paid for is a priority. Otherwise, we are in debt. And one of the things we've done very well over the course of the last twenty-five years is not go into deep debt. To spend money that we have and 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 grants that we have, but not not put ourselves in a, in a, in a dark place. So paying that off would be my priority. So I, and again, interest rates are gonna be higher when we build than they have been before. So if that's the priority, then uh, these other things are just things that are wishless for after it's more balanced out. So we're paying what, you know, where maybe we're earning and we're paying it, you know, paying the bills at the same time and maybe that's balanced. I'm just saying, we're getting ahead of ourselves by saying, hey, we're gonna do this with that and we're gonna do that with that and this with that.
So, not, not at all.
And I'm I'm not gonna be around too much longer, but my opinion would be keep this the way it is dedicated to the parking garage. Put earmark, maybe some of East End dedicated just for parking issues. Doesn't have to be necessarily the garage, but for parking. And because I think you're tru- right, it's gonna be greatly debated.
It is. This, the reason why it's set up the way it is right now is because downtown wanted the parking fund to pay for their parking problem. That's the only reason we set it up this way. The only reason that we weren't having it as something like a cash cow that you could use for ten different things. I'm gonna suggest to you that East End businesses will be furious if they find out that all of that parking money is going to pay off.
What do they think it's gonna go to right now?
Well, we we we, council's never decided.
Well, then there's no, there there should be nothing for them to be pissed off about. We've never said that money's gonna go to us doing anything for your businesses. We are just creating revenue because you already have.
As as an East End.
The city did actually, has invested in their parking. When the, when Colorado Boulevard was redone and that twenty million dollars was allocated.
Pay for a hundred and fifteen more spaces.
And and what I'm saying is that we have taken over the maintenance of that road. Nobody else has to worry about that but us. So Idaho Springs has dedicated money to that, to those parking lots.
Business owner and a downtown property owner. I would not want all of my East End money going to the downtown parking garage.
Did not say all. Just saying we should pay off our big bills first, just like anybody does in town.
But then it's the, I think you leave it to council's discretion. This way it's dedicated, the way it is right now.
Last council meeting, we were also talking about this. I know Lisa brought up some points about wanting stuff to go to like fire mitigation.
Sure.
But I'm confused, because you sent up the lighting around this spot. I don't, what I'm reading, I'm I'm just.
And I'm, I'm gonna agree with you.
Okay.
It it is specifically talking about uh, mobility improvements.
Okay.
So I I would, I would agree with you.
Okay. Cause then I was like, cause that just confused me. So I was like, then that seems way more flexible already than
Yeah.
Than it is.
No, 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 it's even narrower than I remember.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I think there's, there's three keys to this, I think I remember. One is, um, so this is not limited to the downtown. That's what got me out of this is I kept hearing that this money is gonna only be used for downtown, only used for downtown. So when I looked it up, there is no constraint that the money's used.
That's the limit.
First thing. Um, the second thing is there is limited use. Your language on your list there. Um, the third thing, um, is the unknown, is you need to be wary about whatever language you do adopt for future uh, bonding and bonding against it. So that you can make a a very clear case of what the money's going for and and that types of. So that's something that's down the road. Um, but those are some things I would keep in mind whenever this discussion.
Well, that sounds like the common conversation anyway.
I mean, I don't disagree with you, Kate, about putting money towards the bike path. I mean, maybe that funding should come somewhere else, but the, there's a few things that we haven't really discussed or talked about, but like having outlining parking and having some type of transport system like that, because that might be in the future, right?
You're gonna get me on.
The flexibility to be able to spend that.
All of that, except for funding the bike park.
Okay.
Or any private entity. I'm just not gonna ever be on that, on board with that.
What about the bike park?
And because, because Chuck, because I, when the bike park came to council, and I don't know if you were on back then, it was a self-sustaining entity. It was none of this partnership. It was none of, uh, you know, Idaho Springs is going to like give things away. We it was never that discussion. It was really simply some guys who happened to ride um, bikes saying, hey, we'd like to put some trails on your, on your your acreage that is basically unavailable to use for anything else. And we're gonna bomb in and bomb out and we're gonna get permission from the Argo. I mean, it was pretty much that.
I see, and I was not on council eight years ago.
And it was like a handshake and then, you know, council was, oh, yeah, do whatever you want up there. It's a park, we can't do anything with it anyway. And lo and behold, all this stuff followed afterwards. So, so again, I was on council and I was like, sure, bike parks, hiking trails. None of it was gonna be this huge thing where we're driving people to town. I, and so I want to be very clear, I was bored when it was something small on a scale. Now it is being marketed everywhere that Comba talks about any of their stuff, which is driving a, a big I don't know how to say, like, it is causing small issues in our town that I think will either mellow out quickly because people will get bored or will become bitter. And I I'm not a specialist of not bike communities, I have no idea. But I don't wanna, I personally never agreed to say, hey, yeah, Idaho Springs is gonna throw money up into those trails. And I don't think anybody else on council was, was agreeing to that either. But I can't speak for.
I mean, there's only been in both ways. If the bikers are paying for a lot of the parking, we wanna maybe put some of that towards what they are trying, I mean.
Now, that would be interesting to track and I would be having no problem with that.
Gary had an interesting point. You can sell it to those bikers to go to the safety parking if they know a dollar of every parking tab is going to their bike trails too.
And 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 I will tell you that if that was trackable, I would be behind their money going to that, that unit.
I think it is trackable.
Is trackable.
I know that down to uh, the uh, East End is seeing uh, definitely an increase in business because of bike.
We have geo-fenced the bike park itself. And I've also separated out Argo Landing from the bike park.
That's good.
So, and again, from the mountain park. So if people are in the mountain park, just the trail system itself for more than ten minutes, they will be counted as a visit. So now we have geo-fenced that section away. So we'll be able to see where they were prior to their visit, whether they parked in Idaho Springs parking, whether they were at the top of the gondola and entered, we'll be able to see where they came from.
Alright, well, maybe we'll get some better information and we'll see what they're bringing to the table.
So, another tidbit too is I don't think it's going backwards, Kate. I think it's going forward and we have basically not enough parking to supply to whom we're inviting to this town right now.
I agree.
So I think we look at other avenues of creating more parking in some instructive way somehow or I mean, it's, the domino effect has started. Unfortunately, I think that's the thing is, the overflow of parking is an issue with the residents.
Yeah.
It's.
Yeah.
Has a lot of effects.
Alright, uh, any questions for Guy? Alright, we will move to.
Chuck, do you mind if I use the, that you've been before?
Oh, you bet, bet, sure. Uh, next up, we will welcome Ed. Hey Chuck. Hey, you got time for coffee or something if you want?
Some water, definitely.
Yeah.
I think it might be too late for coffee.
That always helps with.
But I was thinking about coffee.
With stress and pressure.
Coffee will probably just make me forget what I'm talking about.
Oh, maybe that's.
There's plenty of things on my list to forget to talk about.
Alright.
I I actually forgot to add something on the list that I added just now.
Oh.
And I'm like, oh, yeah, there's that too.
What is that? Does that mean that you forgot to remember to forgive?
That is exactly like that. That's how, exactly how I would put it.
We are on the same page, alright.
So, which is the worst?
See, I was trying to save you from this, no, by having you committed. Home or away? Ever been to Red Sox City?
No, never.
It's classic.
Yankee fan would certainly please.
No, it's a cool park.
I'm sure it is.
Oh, it's very, it's smaller, it's older, it's very, you can sit right down on the field level, it's just.
Well, alright, Ed.
So Ed, I do have one question before you get going.
Sure.
Has the Great Pumpkin, oh.
What? It's arisen?
The Great Pumpkin is here.
Oh, wow. And that just happened today?
Oh, it is. I say hi.
Is it in the right direction?
Does the picture that Ed sent me, it's not in the right direction?
No, that was while it was being installed.
Oh, yeah.
I have to run to another thing.
It's quite a more detailed because.
I, I wanna go to it.
Alright, well.
Thank you to you and your crew.
Yes.
Yes.
Right.
Really appreciate it being up a month before Halloween and.
You know, Sadie sent me, was it a text message?
No, an email.
You sent an email that said, when is the Pumpkin going out?
Well, no, they said it that it was.
Delightful.
I'm just gently asking.
I'm definitely asking. Yes, I agree.
We were gonna do it.
He's up there, he's he's up there anyway, taking it down.
Do it yesterday.
A touch of snowman.
But a, a, a couple of guys were in. And they were important that I had them come and uh, know what to do with the Pumpkin.
Cause they have done it before.
No, because they haven't done it before.
Oh.
Oh, because the guys that have done the Pumpkin before uh, may be retiring soon. So the guys that haven't done the Pumpkin before, uh, Josh was the only one over there, I think. And I think maybe Bob was over there a little bit, but you know, I told Bob just to watch and direct, don't, don't hurt yourself.
Chuck, can I ask Ed something that's on, really quick? So Troy Erickson from Q House called me today to ask me if any of the, if we had any jobs around town, specifically at the library, that needed volunteers. Is that ever like something that would be on your radar and maybe asked? Cause those guys all have to be employed while they're up there. And they're very specific times that they have to do things. They're young. Would be great that they could actually learn some sort of craft or trade or something. And I just wanted to put it.
So are they?
So the Q House, let's just say this is like, these kids have actually shown that they are ready to move forward with their lives and leave their sort of difficult past behind.
I'm on the JCR, is that a person? So they're all youth and detained within the juvenile system, like and then they apply to be a part of this program where they get to transition to community placement. So they get to go live up in the Q House. And they either have to be in school full-time or they have to work. So they're all required to have jobs in the community and they have staff that like transport them and like supervise them. But they all have, yes, committed a crime that has ended them up.
Well, are they, um, are they teenagers?
Yeah, they're all teenage boys.
So, um, and I'm pretty sure we can do like sixteen, right? Maybe, was that?
I'm just thinking summer work.
Uh, sixteen, uh, driver's license.
They don't have to drive, they have transportation.
I don't know that they.
Right, well.
I don't know that they can drive.
I don't think they're allowed to be on that. Yeah, they have these requirements.
You know, drive a truck.
Well.
Do.
I don't know that they can, I don't know. Anyway, just throwing it out there. Chuck, to think about, maybe look at, I can ask, I can give you more information. I'm gonna need the guys on Thursday.
I think that is a really good thing to bring up. One other thing, and I may need some help. Uh, from Andy, uh, perhaps Jeremy. Just because, uh, you've been involved in the community maybe long enough to remember this. But weren't they involved with the recycling program?
Yes, yes. I'd love to have them back.
They did a lot of great stuff.
I would love to have them back for that. I don't know why that ended.
Same, I know that was something you were interested in.
Well, Troy left and I think some of the things went away.
A huge initiative of the businesses to figure that out.
Yeah.
So maybe, hello, because I'm meeting with, with the guy that I think is running it on Thursday.
Physical stuff.
And I will. Set up something so that you guys can chat with us.
This is a good point, like they work really well with only one or two students around their backs, like maybe eight, like sixteen.
Oh, okay.
So they have a lot more like capacity now than they have in the past.
All right.
I'll, I'll get information for you Chuck. I'll get contacted.
This is really, I think this is really worthwhile to pursue. Um, it would help them out and help us out.
I think it does help them out and they start to learn like, I mean, Ed, you would be a great mentor with kids that, you know. Let them, you know, teach them how to go forward and, and do it. Look at, look how I came up with it.
My, my short answer is yes.
Okay.
And that they would fit right in with the rest of us down.
You've got the whole town, Ed, let's face it.
Right, well, you know, all of us had trouble.
Hey.
At the beginning and, and, and we all, uh, and we've all overcome our past.
Yeah, I love it. I love it.
I definitely have known.
You love the.
Always get such a day's struggle.
Uh, but anyways, that is something really, uh, well worth pursuing and I'm, I'm glad you brought that up.
Okay, I'll read it for you.
Uh, but Ed, please, uh, take it away with your, uh, your budget.
Right, okay, so, um, some staffing. Um, requests would be to finally get this lead operator position. That would be water or wastewater. Or both, um, lead operator position. Um, and then maybe something to have an ORC designation. Depending on, you know, for the lead operator or for an operator. Who has shown that they've been able to get the licensing and have enough knowledge in order to do that kind of thing. We can assign ORC to water, wastewater, distribution or collection, any of those, or all of them. So, um, when people move up. Into position, you know, having that job description, hey, I'm an ORC is, um. Something to say, you know. Uh. I'm, I'm working on a maintenance supervisor, uh, over the park streets and building maintenance department. Right now, like Willie's serving as that. Um, and he's been doing like a really good job. Um, he always stays in communication with me and usually tells me way more than I need to know.
Well, I, I, I have heard not, nothing, I was, nothing but great. So, and usually, especially public works, you know, it is a thankless job and. If you hear anything at all, it's you, you didn't fix my problems yet, but.
Right, well, you know, I'm not so sure about that because everybody has been thinking or. Seeing things that they also see and then, or fixing it.
Clyde is very happy.
Right away, yes. His curb is beautiful. Have you seen his curb?
His curb is beautiful. Yeah, his curb is beautiful. He can move very easily. You know, I, I had a phone chat with him about how much he appreciated your time and.
So good.
Yeah.
Right, um, I would like to hire a operator. That, for distribution and collection. Um, I wind up helping Josh a lot, which pulls me away from. Uh, what I'm supposed to be doing. Off doing locates or trying to figure out where lines are and, and stuff like that. Uh, Bob. Has said that he would, wants to retire in December. So we'll see him, deep as a gate, perhaps that. Um, a couple pieces of equipment? Ed, before you move on.
Yeah.
Um, just to clarify for council, the first two positions, the lead operator position. And the maintenance supervisor position, those are both, uh, current positions, they're budgeted positions. Uh. They would be modified, we're up, you're updating the job descriptions for those two positions. The lead operator position, uh. Um, Billy is in that at, at, at this time. And then, as you mentioned, um. Um, Willie is in the maintenance supervisor position.
Right.
So, so those are two exist, I just wanna, for council, definitely wanna make sure they understand, those aren't new positions. The one, the maintenance supervisor position has been vacant. That was, uh, created a couple of years ago, approved in the budget. But it's never been filled with the idea that we needed a second in charge in, in water wastewater, but also in public works when they were separate departments. So now that we have one department, that you can, with, as you as public, um, works director, would have a lead operator. Uh, or maybe, maybe two. I know we're still talking about what that exactly looks like, but for water sewer operations. And the, the facilities, and then the maintenance supervisor over park streets and building maintenance. Right, well, I think right now what we have is what we're calling maintenance supervisor.
Yes.
At the water park, or at the wastewater.
It's a bit, and not upgraded.
Essentially, that job description just says. It's, it's not, it's not a supervisory position. It needs to be upgraded, as I understand it. Does that sound right? It does say water and wastewater. On that one. But it'll be lead operator and then probably include. Um, ORC responsibilities. Those, those, those positions exist, but they're, we're gonna have, we're working on updated job descriptions for those two positions. They'll come back to council for final approval, then we'll get those. Uh, probably filmed. But, so, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then the third. And I don't know if that was a. Maintenance supervisor job description on public works. Uh, there wasn't. There wasn't. But the position was approved.
Right.
Okay, and then years ago, Andy, I thought we had a parks, maybe Katie remembers, but. A park person that was seasonal. We do have two, we, historically, we had two seasonal positions, but the last few years, we have not been able to fill those positions.
Yeah, I saw it happen.
Yeah, so we just haven't, uh, we've kinda gone away from that now. You know, if we. So we're due an interest in seasonal help, it might go that way.
Right, well, that's like Kate had just brought up.
Yep.
That would be a good opportunity.
Maybe some of those kids, uh, could get in and you could meet them and get to know them.
It's kind of a door opener.
You know, and then if, you know, and if they're, you know, if they're, they're good and they have a driver's license. Then, you know, we can get them right in, you know, when they're eighteen.
Are they able to start putting on certification, like in the certification? Driving.
Food service is not the worst, but it's not gonna go, it's, it's.
I don't know if there's necessarily a certification for driving, you know, certain pieces of equipment. But literally, everybody starts on the skid steer.
Okay.
You know, so we started the skid steer. You know, and then you might, and then you might go to the back out.
I mean.
And then maybe to the lower.
It, it might be something that, you know, talking directly to the guy that runs the Q House and saying. This is the opportunity that we have in this town for those kids. And how can we make it more flexible for them? They have to be able to drive around and water the plants in this truck. They have their, like, they need their license. So maybe there's something more specific.
Right.
You know, and the kids can change.
And then that would also give them something to strive for.
Yeah.
Hey, I can get my driver's license.
Well, not only that, but it, it's like, just because they leave the Q House doesn't mean they have to leave the city in particular, you know what I mean?
Right.
So there's also that opportunity.
They can totally hang with us and.
What?
Dig in the dirt.
And I apologize if this has been asked just because I wasn't able to listen like I wanted to. Um, could we do some kind of official intern program without causing you, not an intern, but like. This is your, like, this is your, you know, starting position. These are the things that you've learned.
Like a, okay.
Like, could we talk to the high school? Like, can you take kids for a team?
Like a training.
Can you take?
How do you get high schoolers to do anything? That would be amazing.
Well, you know, you have to find the right, the right place.
They don't have rights over here. I don't think in that way, but they don't have rights here. It's like, it has to be.
They would wanna do something like this.
No, I just think if there's some way that we can make this like an entry level program where it's the beginning step. In working in public works or working in wastewater. Cause you know, there's like, there, there.
Right, some kind of training position type thing.
Yes. That they can, if they go somewhere else, they go to college, they go to, they can say, hey, I did this while I was in high school and like a year or two afterwards. You know, we, and then we have help. And they have something that is a portable skill set that they can take with them. Approvable portable skills, skill set. That might, that might be something that is worth, that, that would, that people would see worthwhile as putting their time into. I don't know. I want something, when I work on something, I want something where I can take it somewhere else, if I need to.
Right, well, you would be able to take everything. Um, where you go. I, you know, I started out making minimum wage. And I worked all summer long for three dollars thirty-five cents an hour.
I did too.
Every single job. After that, I would stay more than minimum wage. And literally because I worked all summer long for minimum wage. And then making this older, admit how old you are. It don't matter, we all know.
Two a one hour, baby.
I'm younger than you, Scott.
All right, I guess next bunch of requests.
I want you to cop in.
It's taken a lot of money to stay in the group.
Let's get back on track.
And, and there, and there, I'm sorry, just one other thing, sorry. Uh, that, that third position, uh, Ed, would, would be a, a, a new position request. Is that, is that correct?
Uh, not necessarily a new position.
Okay, just to clarify that for council.
But, you know, if Bob's leaving.
Right.
And says that he's leaving.
Yep.
Then it would be still the same amount of people.
Okay.
But, uh.
So you're not talking a new position, what you're asking for is, I can help for Josh, who's the main person, the main staff person who's doing. Uh, collection and distribution. Uh, another person, another to, that, that, there'd be a second position that'd be focused in that area.
Yeah, usually there would be two people.
Yep, and then, and there has been historically.
Right.
Right, okay. And I think that we can get these guys. Uh, more into like the water and wastewater budget paid out of that. Because literally Josh is doing water or wastewater stuff all the time, all day long. Certainly, he did the pumpkin today, but, uh, the rest of the time he's doing locates or unclogging sewer lines or. Doing locates or, did I mention locates? A lot of that stuff, or finding, we're finding valves or turning valves or always doing something. Thank you, sir. All right, um. Equipment. Um. The, the, the distribution and collection truck. Is, it was, is where, actually it wore out. The boxes wore out, the cabs wore out. Um, it's, it's, it's sweaty and.
Have you heard from it stoning this car?
Huh?
Have you heard from it stoning?
I know, know, but, uh, I don't wanna play friend for this gentleman. It's got rust in it. There might be tools fly out of it one day.
Like through the floorboards.
Right. Um, so I'm gonna start looking for one of those. Um, prices of trucks. Have a rock.
Really, why?
Because, um, nobody's buying them.
Why?
Because nobody's got any money.
Oh, because here's.
Interest rates. All right, so interest rates probably play a role. Um. The, a, a bunch of the recall stuff probably plays a role, this Ford and GM, and there's a huge GM. Uh, recall out with the engines. Um, I've started to roll up and. Uh.
Okay, that's probably not. Is that sixty-five new or is that, is that a used?
That's new.
Okay.
Um, but probably a Ford. And a Ford truck. Is that included the box as well, the box? It does.
What about, is it too late to, for the hybrid? Like, is there, there were tax breaks on the hybrids?
Hmm, uh, today was a lot of action. The state does give a pretty general.
Cause I mean, I, my understanding that the Fords are actually coming up with pretty good, um, performance numbers on the hybrid.
They are, and I'm, but I'm pretty sure that the, uh, electric, the Lightning is an F-150. Which would almost.
Is that too big?
Carry the tools.
Oh, not too big, not too big.
Barely.
Gotcha.
Yeah, we would, we would want it to be a, a, a one ton.
Gotcha.
Uh, truck, those, you know, we have to pull that jetting machine, the Aqua-Tec occasionally. And then, uh, whatever else is, um, rolling around, giant pieces of steel pipe. Stuff like that. I don't, I don't, I don't, not sure if that Lightning thing would carry it. I would drive it. All I carry is papers and huge pieces of junk and that. And then, uh, a mini excavator. So we sold the large excavator. Track excavator that was down there at ballpark storage that really was too big and just wrong for anything that we had to do with. And I'm pretty sure we, we got. Fourteen thousand bucks out of that, that whole thing. And we get a mini ax that's rubber tracked, that'll work really great in the cemetery. And we could drive it around on, uh, asphalt roads and not break them. And, uh, for about twenty to twenty-five thousand bucks. So I tried to take a look and see if I can't find one of those.
Is this, um, does, I swear I'm not dragging this off track. Does this also take into account, we had talked. This year about doing a plan, like putting a map or a plan on how you plan to do snow removal. Does this take into account any changes that need to happen for snow removal?
No.
Okay.
I'm.
I thought I would bring that up to you.
You might wanna go ahead and revisit the snow removal stuff. Because from my point of view, what we needed to do to fix the snow removal was get out there and do it. And that's the plan.
Okay, well, no.
We already know, we, we already know what the plan was to remove snow.
Can you put a map of the, of some kind of action?
Okay.
Please.
So just so everyone knows, the plan is to do, uh, the main thoroughfares, Colorado Boulevard, Minor Street. All right, and then from there, work our way out. But we actually need to get out and start doing it. When the snowing.
I don't know if I know, um, it down to like schedule.
Right, if it's snowing, we're out.
I think if people know, well, you know what, I live over on Eighth and Center, so I'm gonna be behind Colorado and Minor. I'm just telling you, like, some of the.
I live on Wall, man. I can expect that I'm probably not gonna get clapped for two days. I just think that you just have to use a little bit of like.
Girl, girl.
But I don't want him to get, I don't, I don't think it's for the guys to get like blamed because. They didn't get out in that order. It is gonna be literally how it looks when it comes down.
I think, like you said, this is our general plan. This can all.
But Ed, uh, back to, uh, the budget.
It really was not trying to drag us off topic, like.
Um, the wastewater plant, uh, you know, just a few years back, we spent like. Ten million bucks on that sucker.
Mm-hmm.
So. I don't think we need to do anything for that. Except regular maintenance. One of those regular maintenance things is to possibly replace the tertiary filter cloth. Which might cost about thirty thousand bucks. Um. Oh, wrong button. There, down back. Uh, for the water. The Chicago Creek Water Main Phase One, might be like three hundred and sixty-two thousand bucks. Uh, some new fire hydrants on Montane, just in case they start a fire up there, probably about eighty thousand bucks. Um, some air compressors, so. I'm pretty sure, once I get all the bills in, at least that. Twelve or fifteen thousand bucks on these air compressors that run them. And at the beginning of the whole, when it, when it started to break down, I asked compression leasing. What do you think of these things? Or is it worth repairing this? Or should we buy something new? Right, because it was like nine thousand bucks for the radiator cooling deal. And they said, these are good compressors. We still have parts of them. Right, but then after we put in the radiator and then like the blowout valve, there was a whole string of other things. That went along with that blower. And, you know, then they kind of changed there too, oh, these are old. So. I got a quote for sixty-five. But, and since one of them is basically brand new, you know. Maybe we'll wait on that. But I just wanted to have it on there to say maybe we might do that, maybe we won't. Um. And then a regular maintenance thing at the water plant's gonna be the filters, which is gonna be a hundred thousand bucks. So we do, we'll do, we'll buy ninety filters. Every two years, that will, that'll keep each skid new membranes every six years. And they're usually good somewhere between five and seven.
And on the Montane fire hydrants, are you adding more?
I'm just replacing the ones that are up there, cause there's a, there's like five up there. But, uh. All of them but one. Uh, a couple of them I wanna do, one of them needs to be done this year before they put the tank in, cause it leaks. When they put that new tank in, it's gonna make it leak more.
Higher pressure, right?
Yeah, but another one is broken. And then the other three. Are, um. Like redheaded stepchild hydrants that are, you know, the inside, the way the, the way the hydrant close is like one of them. Uh, carjacks that use to lift your tire, you know, with the thing and it, and it folds up like this. You know, the carjack, you can never get straight and never quite lifts the car up properly and then bend stuff. That's how the hydrants work. And they don't work very well at all. Uh, they're Kennedys and. There's a, uh, another weird looking, it's like a little R two D two guy, that's just, you don't wanna turn that. So I'd like to get Newers up there the whole, the whole stretch then.
Sure.
Um, they would actually be able to open those up and get their thousand gallons a minute for sixty minutes at the hydrant.
And with the new system, we have more firefighting, keeping going and then.
Yes.
Yeah, for water, right?
Yeah, that was the issue. We run the water pretty quickly in Montane, then this fixes all the, and the hydrants make sense.
Right, well, it might not fix all of it, but you'll have a thousand gallons come in it for sixty minutes.
That's a lot.
And hopefully that'll. Um. Put out most everything, it could burn pretty quick up there. You guys are gonna be on it, though.
Hoping so.
We can turn those pumps on full blast and keep that water coming up there too, so. Um. The playground equipment at CRC is getting a little bit dangerous for the kids, getting a little bit tore up. Um, I'd kinda like to. Spend a little money and get something in there for the kids to play on that isn't quite so dangerous. Um, I just saw a website that had playground equipment that looked like mining stuff. So there was like little carts and, uh, the slide you went up the. The thingy that where they put the rocks and then you'd slide down it. Uh, it was a slide for, you know, like a, like a mill. A slide.
There was no, like, being about that park and redoing it, the presentation about that.
Yeah.
Where. That's the two and a half million dollar job.
Yeah, where are we on that or is that just?
That's still the dream, still the dream, uh.
Grant dependent.
Yep, grant dependent and also the thought was to expand the park as well, the playground.
Yeah.
Uh, so we have a bigger park. I think what Ed's focusing on now is what we can afford right now with some of the other projects we have going on and. It is kind of grant dependent to do that, they, they plan for CRC Park, uh, playground. So this, this would be really maintenance, this is really trying to fix some of what we have down there and.
Cause they tried to save and all that, so.
If we wait for the big plan.
Yep.
We may wind up with nothing.
It's gonna be a.
We don't wanna do stuff, something.
Well, plus if you buy new stuff like next year, we can wrap that into.
Right, well, it wouldn't necessarily all have to be new stuff. It could be like a slide. To replace the slide that's broken and then we take that slide down and block it off in some kind of nice manner. And we get a slide that will still slide, because then you can slide, just sliding is fun. I like sliding. And some of those would be cool too. I think they had them when I was a kid and you, uh, do the arms. And you could scoop the sand after pulling it out of your buddies, it was great.
Those still exist.
They do still exist.
Do they? You know, that is kind of how I got mining things.
That could be the training for the new parks guy.
Shovel the, well, and then shovel it. All right, so some street stuff. Uh, at Tenth and Colorado. It seems we kind of like ended with the Colorado Boulevard Phase One. Uh, project. And then we moved into like Phase Two and everyone just kind of forgot about Tenth Street. Because, uh, at Tenth and Colorado, there's one side of the street that. Literally there's new curb and gutter everywhere except for that side. And the water runs down.
Oh, yeah.
The street and just all into this lady's yard. All right, so I've got some.
Is that JV?
I've got some stand things there to keep, uh, to keep that water, um, at bay, it seems to be working.
Oh, yeah.
JV, okay, good, that's a good choice.
Right, but, uh, maybe some, uh, some curb gutter and sidewalk down Tenth Street would be super cool. Um. I'm pretty sure that that'll probably be, I put two hundred K at the top, so I'm thinking that. Uh, it would be like a hundred thousand bucks to do that curb. And I'm pretty sure that we wouldn't really even need engineering. Because we can figure out which direction water rolls pretty easily.
And I think.
And we just do a curb gutter sidewalk, Phase One and Phase Two, I mean, there's no other. It just kind of got missed and then there was like some interim measures that were made over there. To where it kind of looked like, it was probably one of those things like, oh, we'll get back to it on the next thing. And then it just kind of, it fell through the cracks and didn't get, um, started back up again.
That's messed up.
Um, and then I kind of wanna do just kind of like some general curb and gutter repair stuff. You know, like out, out here, right in front of City Hall, there's some curb and gutter that's pretty tore up. And maybe figure out how to fix that up so that it's nice. And then over here in town, there's some section of the gutter that's pretty tore up, but then redo some papers.
What about?
And reboard the curb so that it's nice. Until we get, uh, until we get our money together for this, the, the, the dream of the walking mall. Thing, cause it seemed cool, not expensive.
What about Center Alley just up? I'm getting complaints about Center Alley being drained.
So there was, uh, over there right by Tenth, all right, so there was a lady that came out and talked about Andy and I. And said that when there was a big pavo in Center Alley, it would always fill up with water. But then she was saying that since we cleaned the gutter or the drain out, uh, on Colorado. That the, that the, the pond went away. Right, so I had, uh, Bob or Brad and Lauren went out there. And filled that pavo up so that they found a new, um, section of. There's no more lake. Talked to her. Three or four years ago and two years ago and a year ago. Thank you, I'm glad this is finally, I hope.
It's not really the one I was talking about, but thanks for fixing that one, but the one behind the new parking lot. The water's draining from the parking lot into Center Alley behind the businesses and also, um, oh, the Campbell's place.
Oh, the new one on Sit Fourteenth.
Yeah, in between. Yep, it's draining into the alley. It's gonna be a big ice floe this, this one or, uh, if we don't get some.
Scott's little back little.
Yeah, we get a nice big raid.
Where Amy has the back entrance that she's been filling with. Filling, filling with water and then down into the property.
Well, and I think unfortunately there's a lot of issues in Center Alley, there's several.
Well, it shouldn't be a city issue, honestly, it should have been whoever was. Engineering that parking lot, whoever proved that it should have gone from what you guys had already established as the drains.
Well, the problem is you got a lot of buildings that are draining off the roofs back towards Center Alley, right?
There's video of it actually running into Center Alley. But it, it's running from the parking lot into Sen- Sen- there's a video.
Oh, well.
You can't blame it on the building.
That's additional, but I'm saying buildings, there's.
Sure.
There is issues that maybe it's a big, bigger issue than just one area.
Yeah, I don't even know how you fix that.
I don't know how to fix it.
You'd have to do one of those drop drains. Go down the center of the street, alright, thanks, Ed.
Right, you're welcome. Um, thank you.
And I, I sent you, you were talking about the. Mysterious lake that appears and reoccurs by, uh, Kenny, Kenny McLeary's house.
Yeah, that's what she called me once too.
Oh, okay, which one?
The little lake.
By the.
Oh, yeah, we filled the lake, yeah, we just caught little lake.
She said that it didn't, she had, she had, she said that it hasn't been filling up with water since we cleaned it.
Interesting, yeah. But to Kate's point, I think we need to address what issues come about in a little one at a time, you know?
Yeah, I agree. Uh, the one that's been coming up a lot lately that I added to the list, that I literally wanted to try to get done this year but couldn't. Is the Virginia Street. Between where the Habitat for Humanity is especially. And then like the section of Virginia Street that we didn't get to finish down where Chuck lives is really bad and tore up sections. And then, uh, from the Habitat Humanity. The section to Virginia Canyon and then like all the way to night. I got a quote from Hank to do an overlay, two inch overlay on that whole thing, get rid of all those potholes.
On Virginia Street?
Virginia Street. And I'm pretty sure it was a hundred, uh, slightly over a hundred thousand.
Well, Chuck, what's your thoughts on that?
I was gonna say, really, that's not.
I mean, the overlay on wall is working pretty well.
I drove it, it's actually really like.
No, I mean, the only, the only problem with the wall is that it went up and it's, you know, we slant down into the, to the yards below us, so. That is a problem for the yards below us, but for the most part. I didn't, I wasn't for the overlay, but I will say that, I mean, I'm not trying to convince you it's your street. Amongst other people's street, but it is a mess right now.
Well, yeah, you know, I, I, I'm glad Ed looked into that, I, I wasn't expecting it to be that cheap. Maybe we won't do in front of the mayor's house.
No.
Do everything box in front of. And then nobody can say the mayor got a street right.
I should say inexpensive, they're not cheap.
Right, I wonder, um.
Yeah.
If we need to put in some kind of drainage cover, I understand.
That's what I was thinking, you can do that, right? I call it a drop drain where it comes down in the middle and it, it's like a canal that's under the street, I mean, that would be kind of cool.
Dude that owned the woodworking place said that his. That section next to his and Center Alley would also become a lake as well.
Yeah, I remember, it was like ice floes. Library.
Library, all the way down to Seventeenth, it's been neighbors.
Oh, god, yeah.
But like he was just, what do you call it, what is it called?
A drainage cover.
Yeah, cause that, in the middle, right?
The whole road and put a drainage drain down the middle of it and put big grates.
There's no storm sewer there.
A storm sewer.
Well, it goes to the storm sewer, yeah, it doesn't have to be in that road.
I like this idea of a little bit of cover, put a grate.
Cause the roof kind of goes like this.
And then you can actually like, like the grate, you don't have to dig the, the place up again if something goes wrong in the cover, I like that. That's good. Excellent other places.
All right, um. The roof on the visitors, visitor center continues to leak, no matter what we do. Uh. Chuck said he's got a guy that can look at it.
I do.
Um, there's another cat that right now just finished up. A city building looping inspection plan. And he's gonna let us know what's we're out, where, what needs to that be done and what kind of work, when we keep track of these.
Chuck, there's also a guy doing our, the library in Georgetown as well, there's a company up there, I don't know who they are, but they were working February today.
Oh, was it a white truck?
I can find out for you, I was there, I was there.
Cause I saw a guy from Apple. Uh, I haven't seen him before, but I, pretty kind of a newer looking truck.
I don't hear you talking. I think there's another guy in Mill Creek area that's local.
What is your tree removal, is that just city trees or the trees all?
I mean, we can't just come around and chop down trees on other people's property.
We can't.
I can, I can volunteer, I volunteer as tribute.
But, I mean, if there's like cemetery, um. City owned property, maybe some stuff. If, uh, up there on Virginia Canyon to keep the fire, the wildfire stuff. Um. You know, we can't, I don't think there's a way that we can just walk into Forest Service property and start whacking trees down and. I don't know if that, I don't think that would fly very well.
This public works chop very big trees down, is it small trees or?
We usually hire someone to do.
Yeah, bigger trees, right?
So like neighborhood tree dive, that much. There was, there's another cat that's gonna come and do the tree at the, at the cemetery.
Is the visitor center leaking in one spot or a couple spots?
Yeah, it's like one spot.
So. We should be able to.
Hopefully they can not.
It is a metal roof.
And them are supposed to last like a hundred years.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we. My mom's was a hundred and twelve.
Wow.
Did it leak?
No.
Hopefully your guy can find out.
She's in Hurricane Alley.
Or Chuck Scott. Chuck's got a guy that's a roof crew, that might be able to figure that one out.
He did one for Scott, he did two for me, he did two for my neighbors. He, uh, gave a bid for Tommy Knockers, that could be his commercial, uh, that whole building, very expensive.
Right, all I'm saying is that beyond our.
Yeah.
Uh, scope of skills and time management to do. They might have to, uh, pop a section and like replace the flashing along the whole edge.
Yeah.
Or, or something like that and then maybe re-isolate or seal that. I mean, we, we. We can have the knowledge, just not the time and the tools of that.
Yeah. Well, Ed, I appreciate it and, uh, especially putting in something, uh, for tree removal. But just before you sat down, you said you had thought of something just while we were talking that you thought about adding.
That was the Virginia Street overlay.
Oh, thank you, okay.
I wrote it and read it on the list.
I got you. Uh, questions for Ed?
So Ed, you're about to add that for next year?
Yeah.
Okay, yep. So, so, uh, that overlay provision you're talking about.
Yeah.
Um, Ed, you wanted to mention, um, I know you've been looking into. Um, a, a formal program for, um. Maintenance of sewer, the sewer system.
Right.
Um, and that's something we wanna get going for sure next year and it'd be doing a third of the system.
A third of the system every year.
Yes, every, every three years we would cycle through the whole system. And I know, uh, I sent you some information on that, I know you've got a lot on your plate. But I do know that we wanna think about budgeting that for next year, we wouldn't even have a firm come in. Uh, whichever firm we decide to actually do the inspections, scoping and then handle some of the maintenance, am I right?
Right, okay, um. I, uh. We'll need to look at your thing again, because what you said wasn't.
Yeah, okay, so we'll just need to think of, there will be an item, uh, in the budget for that, for that maintenance program. It'll be out of the sewer.
Right.
Sewer fund.
So, yeah.
But just wanna make you all aware that that is something we're gonna get started.
I'm thinking, Andy.
Next year, yeah. We just didn't have.
And I will probably.
We just didn't have the number.
So what they'll do is they'll check and inspect all the sewer lines. And then, uh, and that will, that something C D P H E answer says that happens about over the past several cycles.
And we, and we've had some, like, couple significant backups.
Yes, we have.
Even, you know, but old, old mains and new mains, so it's, it can happen anywhere.
It could, and, uh, if we, when we have that, it would give us an idea of where to start with the infrastructure. Or better idea, I'm gonna guess, we'd actually have an inspection plan. Any, uh, questions for Ed?
No, thank you, this is very comprehensive and like very detailed and so on things that I appreciate.
It's just a list with bullet points.
Yeah, but she had to take the time to make the list.
Well, Ed, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Uh, Chief, uh, welcome, and just in case there is somebody on council that doesn't know, uh. Sheriff Harris has turned in his, uh, uh, notice. And, um, I was shocked that Clerk Creek County was paying, I mean, the budget problems they have. They were paying, were repaying, I'm sure you all noticed, about ninety-one Gs, especially when you look, Chief has broke down some other agencies for us, uh. I'm amazed I got that through, but, uh, anyways, thank you for running that down.
Okay, um, Mayor Council, I mean, obviously, my big concern is just that starting pay for officers, um.
Yeah.
So, I don't need to go too much into that, but other than. We're just trying to stay competitive, and I think that one of the things I just wanted to bring to light, it wasn't a memo, was. If I remember correctly, I was hired in twenty twenty-one, and we were doing a budget process for twenty twenty-two when I first arrived here. And the council at the time, I think the starting pay for officers was like around forty-eight thousand. And Art was still on the, the council, Bob Bloom was still on the council, and so that's when it was, I believe in the twenty twenty-two budget, when. The pay for officers was up to sixty thousand dollars starting pay, so if you start thinking about just cost of living for over the last four years. Being three percent or four percent, that's, that's how I think we're finding ourselves in this position where, you know, to get it to. Seventy thousand dollars starting pay is what I'm recommending, uh, to be competitive, that's about a sixteen percent, um, increase, so. So I don't know if it's something the city just as a policy needs to start considering, when you have your starting pay for people and you're doing a cost of living increase. For all positions, so that you're not having to, like, feel like you're biting a bullet like four years down the road, so. Uh, that's a policy thing for council, mayor, and Andy to talk through, but, and I know that you, you know, you also have to be careful to not. Create compression with employees that have been here for, you know, a year and buying someone new, and they're making just the same amount, so you kind of run into those sorts of issues.
But that, that would be something that needs to be immediately addressed as well, Chief, is like, if we are upping every year, the, the entry level position and any. We also need to be upping the same exact amount for anybody who's been here.
Yeah, yeah.
And so that compression shouldn't ever happen, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, just that, like Chief is saying, maybe you have somebody that's been here for years, uh, making seventy-eight. And now, you know, maybe you bring in somebody junior, fresh out, making seventy.
Uh-uh.
Right, that's, that's.
No.
Right, right, right.
That, that, that's not, that's not fair at all, I'll quit and come back. Like.
So, it's like new council wages and we get the old council.
Oh, yeah, you know, that's gonna happen. Isn't there none of that?
So, Chief, is that an experienced officer that comes over? Would start.
At what?
At sixty?
Sixty? Would that be an experienced officer too, or just a, a?
So, we made exceptions, that's typically, that's a brand new, fresh officer. So we have made exceptions, um, with people that have to come in with experience. Um, you know, we, we hired a person not too long ago that had a lot of experience, and so his pay was raised. Um, after he completed his probationary period and F T O, so I discussed that with Andy, and it made sense because the. He had over ten years of experience, he's almost like a supervisor as an officer, so, um, so we have done that, but. I guess what I'm trying to say is we're, we're still in this position where we're, I'm a little more concerned about what it looks like when people are surfing the web and are looking for jobs.
Yeah.
And they're seeing.
And where's the number?
And you're, and you're low.
And then wave a little bit.
Yeah, and, and so that, that's, that's kind of what that, that concern is.
I mean, Little Mountain View, it's like seven blocks, and they're, they're, they're beating us.
They have two officers, two officers.
They're beating us by like eighteen thousand, that's huge, I mean, it's.
Where is that?
Uh.
Just speed down Sheridan and you'll find them.
They'll find you.
Speed down Sheridan.
Well, yes, they will.
Edge, Edgewater area, no? Yeah.
Am, am, and, am I wrong, isn't it only like seven, eight blocks or something?
Yeah, but isn't that, their property values are in the millions, like.
I don't think much, but they do raise a lot of money from fines.
Oh. I speed nowhere.
Been all the news in the past, yeah.
Oh, oh, okay, I'm okay with that.
To the extreme.
I'm still okay with that.
But, uh, Chief, really, uh, these are kind of jaw dropping, Scott was just mentioning going the other way. It is a miracle Avon P V gets even a single officer.
Sure.
Because that is veil, and I mean, unless you're given free P D housing.
It would be very low to me, yeah, and some of these numbers, for, for instance, I know the state patrol one. That's the number that you're paid to start to go to the academy, and then oftentimes, once you complete the academy. It jumps up considerably, another eight, nine, or ten thousand dollars per year.
Yeah.
So I, I didn't wanna, I just put that, that number, and that may be the same with Avon, it could be something like that, where then it jumps up.
Yeah, cause it is so expensive there, you know?
Sure.
Uh, I, I, I don't know they would have a lot of luck paying ninety-one thousand at Clerk Creek, it's been. I still don't know how the county commissioners approve that.
I, I don't either, I, I don't either, and so, it, it can't, it, that, well, just to say, I mean. Most of the deputies make more money than the two experienced sergeants that we have working for our department, and so.
Yeah, that's crazy.
But just, I mean, I realize that it is, that is crazy, but I just wanna make sure that we're, that we're looking at that, um. And so then, just, I'll touch on some of these other things, you know, I don't normally list things like fine, fine numbers, but I have noticed that we have. We're, we're taking advantage of just trying to make sure that it's safe out there in the construction area.
Yeah, might, might be as much as four hundred Gs, sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, but you know, another one that you did talk about, and it pushed us, uh, I believe, uh, to a better place. Was, uh, it was really out of hand, as small as we are, while we were paying for dispatch.
Yeah.
Sure, so now, that is a six-figure savings, that's ongoing, year after year after year, we will continue. To be in a six-figure better position, because we, we went the different, and I would suggest, had it not been for your vision. I'm not so sure Clerk Creek County would have gone on their own, or at least as sharply as they did.
Sure.
Well, Chuck, can, can that money now that we, kind of through the first year, which I think was, to my knowledge, most of our trial period? Can that money be used to like, make our salaries more provocative?
Well, you know, uh, I think, uh, Chief has pointed this out, because I, I believe it, it really is a good faith effort to show. They're not just sitting on their hands, but they're, they've, and they're, they're really actively trying to do what they can, you know, to save the city, exactly.
No, actually with the fines. Save money.
So I think that, that argument is, is well received, at least for me.
Okay.
Um, you, you know, if you do the, uh, uh.
We still come out in the wash.
If you do the increase for as few officers as they have, it still doesn't even equal the savings that, that brought to us, and that's.
Exactly, yeah.
Why I bring up, it's an ongoing base, year after year, we will continue to reap the, the savings.
So, so it sounds like we need a formula, and, and I, I can't imagine that we're the first people that have, have this problem. That we need a formula for how the pay increases would affect everybody on that particular staff, and, and probably all the staffs, really, when you really get down to it, um, right?
Kate, uh, I'm glad you brought it up, because Andy had in our priorities, uh, when we had our retreat. That we wanted to evaluate employee compensation, and we have an eye for competitiveness, uh, of other comparable jurisdictions. And that was one of our goals, because we knew, and as Andy had mentioned to us. We struggled for a very, very long time just to get to the bottom of the C M L pay range. And now, I mean, I think there, it's not even viable, we are financially a very successful city. And there, there is every reason for us not to be at the least in the middle of that pay range.
Are we in the middle of that pay range with our staff, not our leadership, with our staff?
No.
Cause that's, like, that's where I see us, our chairs, fun is breaking out there.
At, at least, I don't believe so, but let, let me turn to Guy and Andy, uh, maybe we could do some checking on that, but I, I do know that we, we struggled. For, uh, you know, and I, I, I go back to when I was on, uh, H P R C the first time, and we, it was just abysmal. I, I know Ed remembers this too, you know, we, we had some horrible pay, probably the, some of the lowest pay in the state.
Well, I know we, last year, we made a very good faith effort to properly compensate our leadership, I think we need to make that same good faith effort, we're gonna do that. You know, for police officers and for the staff, before the rest of our city staff.
But the one thing I do encourage is that, rather than each year, when we're doing this, cause we have searched out these things before. That we try to use the same towns over and over and over again, that are going through the same kind of growth that we are. Cause otherwise, I could actively go out there and find four places right now that make less than we do. Because, but they don't have near the volume or anything else, so what my point is, is that, let's use things similar, so that it's apples to apples and not apples to oranges.
Yeah, Kate, I agree with you, and fortunately, uh, C M L every year puts out a really extensive, uh, salary survey. I mean, they, they've done so much life work for us.
Good, yeah, that's awesome.
You know, we can pick twenty, thirty, forty.
Places.
Uh, that are approximately our size, dealing with same.
Same volume of people too, though, I, I seventy is, like, that's the biggest thing, I mean, I, I don't know how many other places with our demographic. That has that much impact from that road, from, you know, I mean, obviously, there's veil and everything else that's all the way out, but, yeah.
You know, when Chief gives his report, uh, with, uh, with the council meetings, um, you see so often, so much of their business and bad people. Are I seventy related.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, that's just more work.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, of work.
And, and I, I just would mention that, you know, as much as we would all like to live in the community, none of the officers live in the community, they live in the metro area, so. I mean, I think it's, it's fair to say, I mean, C M L can have the pay study, but we are in competition with the metro, I, I don't want to say.
Of course you are.
But I mean, we're, 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 we're fortunate that we're close enough, that commuting is not terrible, usually. But that's, that's kind of where, where we're, it's, it's just where we are, we're not compared to all kind of out, kind of in the middle of nowhere.
Oh, no, Chief, I was making the, like, if I wanted to be on the devil's advocate side, I could be, I could find places.
Sure. Oh, of course.
Yeah, so I'm actually, I was the one that suggested that we take it out of your savings, I wanna be on the record.
Oh, no, yours mine, I'm just saying, I know that it's easier for, to just sort of, I'm afraid. To either could be lured, not only.
Away.
To the county, but also lured away to, to, to the places in the metros, I think, I think what we offer here is, um, is a, is a, is a really great community.
Small town, yeah.
And they like working here, they do like working here, I just wanna make sure that, that, you know, I'm advocating for, for them, I, I fully agree that. Um, I appreciate that the council and mayor's support and with leadership and what you've done, what you've done for us. Furthermore, what I would suggest is, the, the, whatever, if, if, if we're able to move the pay to, we'll just say seventy. That's a fairly decent percentage increase, and so, as I put in the memo, it's just in the one sentence, but really pay attention to that, that I think you don't. If, that's not an across-the-board percentage, because certainly that wouldn't apply to me, and that definitely wouldn't apply to the higher paid and more tenured people. And so you would do, you know, the higher increase for the starting, it, let, let's say fifteen percent, which I know it's a lot, but it's, it's a couple positions. Um, and then you would lower that to like eleven percent, or the mid, mid-range, maybe seven or six percent for the, the officers. And then cost of living, whatever, or something.
Yeah, there should.
You do, I mean, you don't, you don't just do it across the board.
I know, I press the bar, I know, but it, there's gotta be a formula, like, I can't believe that this is already not like on paper somewhere, and math is not my specialty, I'll be, so. I'm the worst one that, but anyway, I think you're absolutely right, I wanna keep people, training people costs money.
It does.
It's a waste of money when they leave, so keeping people happy is to be of, one of our bottom lines.
Well, one of the things that, that's a real pain for our profession is you have to send, if we hire someone and send them to an academy, we really don't see them on their own for a year.
Yeah.
Almost a year, cause they have to go to the academy for so long, and then they have to go to the, the, the field training program for so long, so I mean, so. So that kind of, and that's the way the profession is, that's why a lot of departments are not fully staffed, and they, it's just, it's like a vicious, vicious circle.
Let's get them on their bed. Gotcha.
So, if you wouldn't mind, I'll move on to the other thing there, unless you guys have further questions on that, but, I mean, the priorities, obviously with the new building, uh. We, we had built in some money for the furniture, fixtures, and equipment at F T E. Um, and so, we don't anticipate anything, um, you know, there'll be, we would like to have a fingerprint machine. Which is not gonna be real cheap, I think they're around five thousand dollars, um, but, but the furniture, the actual furniture and. The things we're gonna need for the training room and, uh. Yeah, so that's, that's a priority, uh, last year, you all approved half of our radios being replaced, and. We were, we're looking to replace the other half of the radios this year, the radios are out of, uh, if it breaks, they won't fix it, is what happened with Morin Roll after five years, so. It, it's kind of a racket, but.
It is a racket.
They do have to be replaced, so we will have spares if we do that, and then council had approved E citations last year. We postponed that, because I was sort of sitting on the sideline watching the sheriff's office and what they were gonna do. They tried a system that works with our system, we're unhappy with it, they have some different challenges though, so. Um, what we'd like to do, and I explained to Andy and the mayor, I believe at a meeting, we'd like to demo something if we can, so. And then make a decision on what we wanna do with that.
Do we still have that, uh, ran out of the twenty twenty-five budget since it wasn't spent?
Yeah, it's part of the, I think it's in the capital improvement is where, is where that is, cause it's a one-time expense basically. And then, the other thing I really would like to look at is getting a narcotics dog, um. If you follow us on Facebook, you see that we have a lot, a lot of narcotic arrests, um, I really don't want people that are distributing and. Moving this in the community, um, to feel real comfortable, um, I think as a department, we have now experienced. People and an officer that would be, that this would be ideal for, this would be a dog that is solely a narcotics dog, and maybe a tracking dog, so it could actually. Potentially track or find like a lost kid or somebody, um, that, that wouldn't be trained to like track a suspect who's running to the mountain necessarily, cause that's not a bite dog. So it's not, that's, I'm, I'm an anti-bite dog type person, I worked in a department that had those, and all they did was injure the police officers. And so, I don't, I don't want injured police officers, um, just even in training, and they had all the equipment, and they still would be injured all the time. Um, plus, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have that need, we really don't have that sort of. Knock on wood level of violent crime that's associated with using that type of thing to.
That's what I was saying, we're crazy.
So, so this would be like a smiley, happy, uh, black lab or something like that, that can be at public events, you can go to schools, I mean.
It's a house.
So that's, that's what I'm looking for.
And one officer is assigned the dog, and he takes care of it.
One of them.
Just one officer.
So is it like his dog that goes home with him? Well, I wanna be able to name him.
But we did that. We would act it out, we would look at having that officer, uh, and, and I would talk with Carmen and Andy about that, but. Likely have them sign like a contract that they, you know, that they're tending to be here for at least four years or three years or whatever that is, because of the, the investment, which I think is very common. And then the last thing, which I think is, is, you know, Dan Delft's car that he donated to the city, I mean, I still have that sitting in our garage, and we, we charge it on occasion. I'm telling you, I think it would be such a hit to have that as a police car and take it onto minor when we're in the new building over here.
Yeah.
I mean, people would take pictures of it all the time, and, there, there's, there's a lot of unlimited sort of ideas about that little car. But I mean, you could put, oh, yeah, Ron, you could put a light bar on it, you could do all kinds of really cool things. That, that would, it would be photographed, it would, we would be the only city with something like that, I would tell you that.
If you want to touch a truck thing, that's.
Oh, there's just, there's so. Oh, there's just, there's so many.
And then they have a spare car, one broker, which are, we're in.
It'd be a great parking car, by the way.
So, I just, I'm like.
And the parking guy.
I don't know, there's so many ideas, and you can think about like the social media.
That's a great, I think it's a great idea, and the visual would be awesome on that corner.
Bring the police in to be the good guys, and bring light to them, it's gonna be.
I, I agree.
We should paint them like a little bee.
Great color relations.
The police bee.
Yeah, so, so those are kind, that's kind of the direction, I think that these things tackle, you know, the things that are, are necessary, now, the little car, necessary, not necessary, it's not, it's a, it's a minor cost overall, um, but I think, I think with the new location and being so much more visible, I mean, instead of just down at the end, tucked away in the corner, it's just gonna, it's really gonna change.
What, what is your vision for that, just out of curiosity? See if we can make it happen.
For, for what?
For the little car.
Well, I, I mean, of course I'm biased, I wanna make it a little police car.
So with like the little sides, like the decals on the sides and little red cherry top, cherry on top?
Something.
Okay, that's fine.
We've spoken, now, there's other things that you, we could do, we don't have to do that, and we obviously don't need to make a decision about that tonight, everybody can think about that.
But that's fun.
If you wanted to do an Idaho Springs car, and make it like kind of with, with, uh, business community group or whatever, I mean, there's, there's that option too, of course, I'm biased and wanna.
No, I think it'd be, I think it'd be an adorable marketing thing, honestly, just think of the parade with a little tiny police car being the, the pilot car, like, I drove a pilot car, I know what it's like, you get to be in front, everybody staring at you. Yeah, that would be even funnier.
Do you have a fire truck?
I have seen good guys with little, little cars. I'm in, I'm in, Chuck, tell us what you wanna do.
What Idaho's bringing on the map.
There's a little yellow.
You know, the videos where you do have like two snowplows like rolling over the.
By the way, the kids would go crazy, and they'd be like, the SRO came up and that, they would go nuts.
I know.
The SRO comes, you know, that stuff. I'm in.
It's got a little backseat for a, a dog, too.
Well, the duck, yeah, it's the narc dog too.
I, I think the, the narc dog's name is Dinner.
Dinner?
Yeah.
Like Donner, not Donner, Dinner, like Dinner?
I think, I think Dinner's, that's the name right there.
No, no.
Okay, you say testimony and dinner alerted on the car.
Sorry, I didn't even get what you're saying. I might be slow on the uptake, I've been up since five, three, but.
Well, we'll, we'll come up with an interesting answer to that.
And the car.
Yeah.
Let's make it a plow, be a car.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my God.
Willie could drive it.
And give it, give it a little twenty-four inch plow.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that would be fun, I think that's a fun, at least that's a happy budget thing.
Yeah. Oh, uh, question, budget questions for Chief?
Well, I'd like to say I'm just a little personally embarrassed that he's brought to light the starting, like.
Yeah, I know.
We fall behind on that.
It's inexcusable.
Yeah.
But that, but that's what I'm saying, there's gotta be a schedule and a formula, so that it's automatic, and we don't have to really, all we have to do is approve that every year, and then they don't have to be embarrassed by coming to us to ask for more money. Cuz, I mean, I don't know, Jeremy, if they do that in the fire department, but.
Well, it's the same problem, everything, don't know wages.
Yeah.
The last five years, you know, in a really weird way, cuz they all stay competitive, and I think it's, honestly, I think it's gonna reach point is
You can't.
and you'll make it affordable to be competitive, because it's ridiculous, it's gonna, it's a crisis.
Right, well, right now, it says the average police officer, um, salary in Colorado is between fifty-three and a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars a year.
First starting?
Starting.
You know, Walcock definitely would start at, in the whole of Arkham.
I mean, we're talking Aston, you know?
Has more money than, like, they could create outfits.
Kind of throw the.
They are, I think, but they started.
You gotta take them, and the lows do.
They've got like a huge pot of money.
And, and they do, uh, what I've seen a lot of other municipalities do, they all sell laterals. So if you were making ninety-two, that, you're right, you come in at ninety-two.
But that, but one thing is.
Right, Summit County, I looked at that for a game, it's eighty-seven.
Mm.
But, and that's, that's, I mean, how, how expensive it is to, to, to live there. Um, obviously, if you've gone by the PD, you can see there's a Summit County deputy that parks his car, PD.
Yeah, most of them live out of the county, fires the same way over there. Eagle County has the same problem.
Well, I like that idea that we come up with a, a formula, and I like the idea that our, the idea of the formula applies to all of our staff, not just our police, but like, so obviously, the police have their own criteria, but I like that idea of a formula on all the staff, because I feel like our staff has the same problem in our police department.
In patrol.
Yeah, well, they do say.
You know, our staff is not made in. Our customer, our customer. County doesn't have us, but I'm such a big.
Well, so, you know, part of it is that, again, we had struggled so long to get to the bottom. And before we got to the middle, we were looking at inflationary raises, but it doesn't help you, cuz you still never got to the middle.
Yep.
Right, so, um.
The play catch-up.
Yeah.
Well, I think it, it's a testament, though, that we can play catch-up, that we have the ability to have Chief come and talk to us, and us be, not be like, no, 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 we can't do, like.
Yeah, I'm afraid there's a lot of, uh, communities that are, are, are faced with that, you know, as of tomorrow, Georgetown, uh, does not have any PD.
Oh, they were not.
There, they, the contract is over with, uh, county. And, uh, Chief, do I have that right?
I actually didn't know that.
Yeah, I think, I think.
I only, I only came on to review. I'm reading to the sheriff's office.
I thought they had too.
Sorry, that was what I read in the card.
Oh.
I, I thought, and also Park County, aren't you in Park County?
Yes.
So Park County, I heard, doesn't have officers patrolling at night.
They don't.
It's only on call.
For a while, hasn't it?
It has been for a long time.
Chevy County, too, we were just.
My household there.
Sorry, I think it's just.
It's not, it's not a free for all, you think, because Park County is well-known to have armed citizens.
Well, not only that, but I, I also.
So. Yeah.
You, you have stability here.
For.
Uh, I'm not so sure, uh, Chief had, uh, forty, forty head count with the county.
I mean, it's one, it's one of the people that know each other, it's.
You know, I, I don't know, uh, in the future with our budget problems, I, I, I would not wanna be working for the county. You know, it's just, nope, uh, here, here they have, there's job stability.
Well, we're not clawing our way up to the basement with our budget.
Yeah. All right, uh, any, uh, further questions for Chief? Anything further before we adjourn? All right, I wanna thank everybody again for giving of their time, uh, we'll call it adjourned at seven forty-one, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.